I'm gonna call to order the city council meeting for the city of Rainbow City for Monday, March 24th of 2025. I'm gonna ask Clark Hopper and Phil Leadus in our invocation to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Would you stand?
Dear heaven father, thank you for another beautiful day to serve the people of Rainbow City. Be with us today as mayor and council. Give us wisdom and to guide us in the decisions that we're gonna make today for the people. Be with everybody who is hurting right now. We know we're missing one of our council people who's got some family issues with his father-in-law's health and we, and please be with the Snow family. They're very dear friends, not only to us, but especially me since I grew up with them. And let James know that you've guided him and you're gonna heal him the best of your ability. These things I ask, amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you turn your cell phones to off or vibrate position, we'd appreciate it. Now I ask the clerk if she'll take a roll call.
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Here. Number five is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on March 17th of 2025 and I'd entertain a motion that we do so. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number six is personnel changes. It's to hire Connor Bernard and hire Brian Bartlett, both of them to start work effective Friday, March 28th of 2025 and as laborers in the Parks and Recreation Department. I'd entertain a motion that we make those personnel hires in its together. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number seven is to authorize Mayor Taylor to sign a contract with Techline Sports Lighting for $529,000. Techline will provide lighting for the Vivian Lee Maddock Sports Complex Phase Two. This is a source well-buying cooperative contract number 041123-tce and then $52,900 will be due in 30 days upon invoice and I'd entertain a motion that you authorized me to be able to sign that contract. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Number eight is ordinance number 602 and it's preliminary, preliminary authorizing the issuance of a general obligation warrant, Series 2025, with certain parameters and validation proceedings in connection therewith. Be a, this is a public hearing. If there's anybody here that'd like to speak for or against, this was no, this notice was published in the messenger and posted on 314 of 2025. If there's anybody that would like to speak in favor, you can come to the microphone and give us your name and address. Anyone in favor? Anyone at all? Anyone that, anyone just like to speak about that? I think I'll bring you up after we do the, the, is there anyone that would speak against it? Anyone to speak against? Hearing none, we're gonna ask, David, would you come up and just give us a general overview so that they can hear it from, from the legal perspective? Just give you, give us your name and your firm for the public record.
Yes, Mayor. I'm David Ringelstein with the law firm of Maynard-Netson in Birmingham and our firm is serving as bond counsel in connection with the issuance and approval of your Series 2025 General Obligation Warrant. The purpose of the ordinance that we're presenting to you for your consideration and approval is really just the preliminary ordinance. We plan on issuing this debt under Amendment Number 772, which is the Economic Development Constitutional Provision. With respect to cities that issue debt under Amendment Number 772, that debt is not chargeable against the city's debt limit, which is the main purpose that we're utilizing this particular constitutional amendment to issue the debt through. The purpose of the validation is just to make sure that the proceeds from this general obligation warrant, which are to be used to finance improvements to the city's recreational fields and also make improvements to certain utility lines to add additional utility capability and capacity to your Commerce Park Industrial Complex. In our minds, we do consider this to be very clear economic development because that, the recreational aspects of it attract people to the city. They spend money while they're here. It attracts baseball teams. So there's sales tax generated from it, lodging tax, a number of revenue. And of course, by financing additional utility capacity, that allows the city to recruit additional employers, industrial users here in the city, which expands the tax base. So in our minds, it's pretty slam dunk economic development, but it's always a good idea to play it safe, to go through a validation proceeding, which is typically just like a little declaratory type action to make sure that we are fitting within the purposes of Section 772. At the time that you're considering the adoption of the ordinance, Mayor, we of course are required under law to publish a notice, giving people an opportunity to come and speak for or against, or to ask questions about the project. So as the mayor alluded to, we did get the notice in the newspaper. We're required by law to give at least seven days' notice. We gave more like 10 days' notice. So we will let the minutes reflect that we did conduct the public hearing for this agenda item. As I stated, this is just the preliminary ordinance. So I'll be back, Mayor, with you guys in a month or two to present to the council for its consideration, the real ordinance which authorizes the loan. And at that time, it will state the final dollar amount, the final interest rate, the final payment amount, all that type of stuff. That's really just preliminarily being approved here. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Is there anyone else? Somebody from Exchange Bank that'd like to come up and speak? I think you covered it pretty well, didn't you? So we have Susan, Jennifer, and Kim here from Exchange Bank and I just wanna make that a part of the record. And we'll be doing our, our bond issuance through them. They're our local bank and it's just another way for us to, to keep things local. I think the legal municipalities have a, a big drive going on right now. That's a, it's just a media blitz about living locally and that's, that's what we're doing even, even in the sense of purchasing or borrowing this money. But we appreciate it, David. Thank you so much. And with that, anyone else that would like to speak for or against? We'll just consider the public hearing closed and I'd need a motion to introduce the ordinance. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? I need a motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration. Is there any discussion? Clerk, we ask a roll call, including me.
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jeff Prince, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance 602? Is there any discussion? Clerk, you take a vote and include me.
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Ordinance number 63 is, or 603 is selling unnecessary real estate property lots number nine through 22. That's 80 acres in Lumley Road Research and Industrial Park to SMD Steel LLC. And with that, we would, we would need to, I need a motion to introduce the ordinance. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? Need a motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration? Clerk, we do a roll call and include me.
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Yes. Motion to, need a motion to adopt the ordinance 603? Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take a vote and include me?
Anita Bedwell, Randy Weiss, Jamison Jenkins, Clark Hopper, Mayor Taylor.
Thank you. The motion passes. That, that motion is for, for us to dispose some property over to SMD and we've been working with them for several months now and it's just an opportunity for us to bring something into that industrial park. If we start talking about this, this warrant issuance of, or this bond that we're doing, a big portion of that is to put some infrastructure into this same park that we're talking about where SMD will go, where Rainbow City Auto Auction will go. There's also five other tenants that'll be coming in in '26 and '27, which just almost fills that park up. We'll, we'll have a few pieces of property, parcels of property that'll be left over, but that amount of, of property going out to bring in, it's bringing in the things that we need the most. These are good paying jobs and it's an opportunity for this city to continue to have good, solid, organic growth. We all, always talk about cities growing, but we wanna make sure that we're growing in the appropriate manner and that it's good growth. This is going to be good growth and I appreciate this council so much for understanding that when we, when I provide them a, a work product, that they move forward with that and they, they don't look for a reason to say no. Our job is to look for a reason to say yes in, in growth of this city, as long as we're doing it in the appropriate manner. And I do appreciate the fact that there's a lot of information that gets pushed out to this council and they are, they're, they're part-time council members, but they work a vast amount of hours just making sure that they're caught up because of the fact that they, they receive so much information that they have to read and digest and question and they get a chance to do that at any time, either towards me or this administration and staff. And I appreciate you guys so much for that. Number, number 10 is to add two streetlights to the entrance at Barone's Pizza for traffic safety upon the recommendation of Chief Yancey and I'd entertain a motion that we do that. Is there any discussion? Those in favor by saying aye? Any opposed? We've just had a lot of complaints about how dark it is there on that section of the highway and Chief Yancey went down. Chief, do you wanna speak to any of that or you good to go? I'd just like to offer, you know, no, but. Yeah, it, it is a safety issue and that's what the chief's saying right now for those that are online. This is just a chance for us to kind of do something, not necessarily an incentive as much as it is just a safety issue for us to clear up a problem that we have there. And, and I appreciate the fact that chief took time to go out there and do that. And I think it's really gonna begin to light up that section of our, of our road frontage and it's a, it's a good thing that we'd be doing there. And with that, I'm gonna move on to the council member comments and reports. Hey, yeah, before we go on, I do wanna recognize that the Berry Center is here and I'd like for them to come up. Jared, do you wanna bring the ladies up here and introduce them and, and just give us, we don't necessarily need your name, but we'd like to have their name for the public record.
I'm gonna start off by recognizing the Jameson Berry Center. I've had the pleasure of working with them for six years now and they are unsung heroes to our community. They don't get recognized enough and then they hear on a daily basis the worst things you could imagine. But every time you go in there, there's still a smiling face. They're doing extras. They're training us. They're making sure we're doing things right and they're also doing things to help push awareness on child abuse. And April is Child Abuse Awareness Month. So thank the city council for purchasing Pennwheels to recognize this. We've got Reagan and Robin. Y'all, y'all have anything you'd like to say?
So my name is Reagan Lowry. I'm the forensic interviewer at the Berry Center and this is Robin Phillips. She's our community outreach advocate. And we just wanted to come today and thank you guys so much for your continued support of the Berry Center. We have such a great working relationship with Rainbow City as well as with the police department, with Chief Yancey and with all of our detectives that we work with. They're all fantastic and we're very thankful to have them. And the children that they work toward getting justice for are always very thankful to have that as well. We're thankful for the city in general, just for all of your support. Mayor Taylor, you've always been so supportive of the Berry Center and we are very grateful. And we just wanted to bring you guys the Pennwheel Garden that y'all purchased for our Pennwheels for Prevention Outreach. You guys get to be the first ones we deliver to. So we brought that and then Robin has brought some information just to share with you guys with our annual report and our brochure. In 2024, our center did 262 forensic interviews. Several of those were children who lived within Rainbow City and cases that Rainbow City were working, whether or not the victims actually lived within the city limits. So this is definitely a cause that affects y'all's city and we appreciate that you understand that and continue to support us year after year.
And I will just add, Kim Long with Exchange Bank is also on our board. So we appreciate her. She's here for two for one tonight. So we appreciate that. And then I do, we do offer community awareness training. So churches, organizations, businesses that, that involve children, interact with children, we do offer those mandatory reporter trainings. So please reach out to us and we'd love to set up something with anyone for that. And then one, one adjustment on your agenda, y'all have Monday, April the 15th as the Pennwheel Ceremony, but it's really the 15th, Tuesday the 15th.
Tuesday the 15th at 1:30. So we would like to invite you guys to come to the Pennwheel Ceremony. We hold it at the Edwah County Sheriff's Office and it's just a day that we can talk about all the children that we have served and how many brave children that have came and did interviews and all of our law enforcement and DHR and everyone that has worked those cases. So we invite all of you guys to attend if y'all are able to.
And then if we can do a photo at some point before we adjourn, that'd be great.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it. The Berry Center just means the world to this city. You know, it's, we, I think we, we set up here and believe that we're supposed to be immune to the need for that service, but the truth is we're not. We're the demographic that tends to have that type of activity inside our city. I think it's good for us to admit that so that we can work on going in the right, the appropriate direction. And having, you know, having our law enforcement up here and also me from 25 years of being a firefighter, you know, the Berry Center has been a resource that, that I called on during my career, just to make sure that these children are protected. And, and I appreciate it and I appreciate Jared for what you're doing. With that, I'll move on to the, to the comments of the council and we'll start with Mr. Weiss.
First of all, thank you ladies, Ms. Lowry, Ms. Phillips, Ms. Long, for all that you do, along with the law enforcement, the detectives. Evil is, is evil. There's no other way to describe it. And children are the most vulnerable people in our society and to have people like you standing in the gaps to try to protect those children just, just makes me proud to be affiliated with the Berry Center and with what you guys do. And again, thank you so much for, for what you're doing there. On a positive note, economic development. Mr. Ringelstein, thank you so much for coming and explaining this to, to people who might have a lot of questions. Economic development is, is one of the main reasons we're here and it's all part of this puzzle that we put together. You know, you have quality of life. Without quality of life, no one wants to come to your city and do any kind of economic development. We have quality of life, recreation, community centers, things of that nature. Then you have, but you have to have the infrastructure to provide with that. So this provides parts of both of that. And again, that brings jobs, revenue, and then more growth. And, and we have a great job with our planning commission, people like that who monitor that growth and make sure the growth doesn't outgrow what we're capable of doing and what our citizens want. And it's just a great opportunity for all of us to be a part of that. The mayor talked about the, the council. It's, it's easy to be on a council where the administration and not just the mayor's office, which is phenomenal, but also the clerk's office and, and everybody involved, we work together. I don't know a single person that I'm involved with here at the city that doesn't have the goodwill of the people of Rainbow City first and foremost at heart. Also, I wanna take the time to wish the Prince family, the Snow family, our prayers that, for speedy recovery. And again, I know Clark alluded to it during the invocation, continue to pray for them as well. But again, I wanna, again, continue to thank the citizens of Rainbow City for allowing us the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Ms. Bedwell?
Well, it's nice to have all of you and you know, it's just really sad that we have to face things like we do with the Berry Center, but I'm just so very thankful for our police staff and as much as they care and then what you guys do and have done in the past. It's just unbelievable. So thank you so much for the love and the compassion that you have. We are so fortunate to have a good, good system that works together with all the agencies and to make things better. So we're just very blessed about that. Another thing that I, I look on the agenda and as we discuss development and we discuss things happening in Rainbow City, we are very fortunate to have some leadership and our, our mayor and our staff that help keep things just moving at a tremendous speed. But there's so many things, I just, just, just unbelievable, the changes that are taking place and the opportunities we have. And speaking of our children, and I've said this before, but we love positive things that go on. And I know y'all probably remember that this, the group from SMD was here a few weeks ago and introduced themselves and it was just such a positive atmosphere and a positive business plan that they have, something that will help our children as they grow up to have a place to work and a, a good place and wanna stay in our city. And that's really, you know, we, we're just, we wanna make good citizens and we wanna also make an opportunity for our, our children to have a good citizenship here. So I'm just very appreciative of that and the work that's done to make sure that that's followed through. There are so many little angles that we each have to follow and so many pieces of the puzzle that it takes to put together, but we're just very fortunate that we have so many people out here and that, that want to do that. And, and, and it is an honor to be a part of that growth and that service. So thank you all and thank you for caring enough to be here.
I'll go to Mr. Hopper.
I got just three quick things. First of all, congratulations on the soccer tournament down there. The girls and y'all both went down to the beach. Y'all had a good trip. Y'all what, finished second? How the girls do?
We finished second. I'm, I'm not sure how they finished. They, they went 1-1 and won, or they did a good job.
You know, that's always great that they get to, you get to experience those things. My kids played baseball at Westbrook. That was always a big AA trip. Cause kids deserve, they work hard. Our children work hard, especially at the high school level, to put us on the mound. You know, coaches get a lot of credit and they should, but without the players, ain't no coaches. So the kids in our community have done such a outstanding job putting Rainbow City and Southside on the mound. The Berry Center, you know, I never worked juvenile when I was at Gaston, you know, I always, but I did work crimes against persons. And so when I did that, sometimes children did come through and I seen what you gals do and, and it's amazing. I also, sometimes people come into juvenile because I've experienced things before they got a chance to experience them. Jamison's getting to do that now, being an investigator. We see things like the mayor was talking about earlier and then his experience. And so a lot of times I did actually got to know y'all through helping new juvenile detectives who was having to work stuff because I did work crimes against persons for so long. And then, so I do appreciate what y'all do. I really do and it's amazing, you know, and it's sad that we gotta have it, but it's like the mayor alluded to a minute ago, you can't be blind. Every city's got the same issues, don't matter what. I don't care what your, your crime rate is. I don't care what your demographics is. I don't care how rich you are. We've got the same issues here that you're gonna have in the worst neighborhoods in the United States. Just not on that big, major scale. And last but not least, I've always said that we're like a family up here and when one of us hurts, we all hurt. We was out for Anita when she was hurt and sick and when her husband. And I definitely wanna tell Jeff and Bevin and Tiffany, cause Bevin and Tiffany lived behind me when we were growing up or in high school. And so the Snows is a big black family to me, just like these guys are. And if they need something, y'all know to call. You know, we love you.
Saturday, April, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Jinkins. Boy.
I'd rather you, I would rather you skip me, I would rather you skip me than call me Jeff like you did last week. So if you, we can take a skip.
Well, Mr. Jenkins.
I just want to start by saying that I, I really want the Prince and Snow family to know that we're praying for them, and we love them very much. And we're hurting with their hurt. I want to start by also saying congratulations to Connor and to Brian. Congratulations, and welcome to Rainbow City. We're glad to have you here. I'll just reiterate, we're very excited about our, our economic growth. That park out there on Lumley Road is, is about to see a boom. And the amount of industrial growth that, not just Rainbow City, but that Edwah County as a whole is seeing right now is really incredible. And then I want to end with the Berry Center. A week ago today, we had a hearing in Edwah County Circuit Court that I was able to be present for, for a sentencing of a large case that a lot of work went into. And justice was served on that day. And because of the work of the Berry Center, some innocent children did not have to get on a witness stand and testify in front of an evil monster who hurt them. And the Berry Center does that work day in and day out. And I just want them to know how much we appreciate them, and I mean that. Sergeant Pell and I serve as the chair and co-chair on the DHR Quality Assurance Board. And Patricia Falcon also serves on that board with us. And not just the Berry Center, but I, I hope that people understand how well law enforcement and DHR and our CAC, all of these agencies work together in Edwah County. I know, I know that Jared agrees 100%, but I had the opportunity actually at the end of last week to go to another county, and not knocking them at all. But when I, when I see things, when I go other places, I get reminded really, really, really quick how fortunate I am to be doing what I do in Edwah County. And we're very, very, very blessed. And I hope that people know that. And thank y'all for what you do.
Saturday, April 5th, the Lions Club will have Pancake Day from 6:00 a.m. till 11:00 a.m. I'll continue to be the head chef of all the pancakes that come off the cradle. So you can rest assured, they'll be delicious. Thursday, April 10th, is the ribbon cutting for absolute respiratory care at 11 o'clock at 545 Steel Station Road. Tuesday, April 15th, and I got the note, the pinwheel ceremony for the James M. Berry Center is to be held in the multipurpose room at the sheriff's office. Another one of our, our former mayor, Mayor Calhoun, is, is having some health issues. And we just asked, reach out and, and ask that you would pray for him and his family. He served this city for 16 years as the mayor and would continue to serve i-if he could. He was a, I, I told somebody today, he, he put us back into a financial situation that this council ended up inheriting. And it, it, it was a really, really nice thing, because we came in and we had a place to, to be able to build from. And that, that, that was all because of Mayor Calhoun and his miserly ways. And, and I, I say that with all the, the grace that I possibly can put together, because he was a hardworking man for this city. Thankful for, for you, David, and we appreciate the, the ladies from, from Exchange Bank. Just so that people will know, and you won't have to wonder if you're to be watching this from home, that, that issuance of another general obligation bond is, is for us to upgrade our, our fields. And, and our fields are going to go through the, the transition of becoming turf fields, which allows us to do something that we've not been able to do prior to that, this. And, and that is that we had, we had struggles being able to find a place to practice our kids. And, and in that, it, it creates just a little bit of animosity from, from the, the organized recreational sports towards the city, because we can't help it. We can't, we can't just make practice fields. But in this case, we get to practice and play in the same place. So I, I believe that it'll make our kids better athletes. It'll, they'll truly have a home field advantage at Vivian Maddox Park. And it's, it's just an opportunity for us to refurbish and upgrade and bring our, our Vivian Maddox Park back up to a brand new position. The same thing goes for Pioneer Baseball Field, as well as the Rec Center Field, which will be more like a little, a Little League Championship Field, and the softball field up on top of the hill. And if you know what I'm talking about, you just know. But the other thing is that we get to go into a, a cooperative effort with the Edwah County Board of Education, and that'll be worked out pretty soon, that we'll be partnering at Rainbow Middle School in doing the track, refurbishing the track, putting all of the event boxes in place at the track, and also doing an artificial turf soccer field here in, in Rainbow City, which is just going to be phenomenal. It'll allow for us to be able to not only use our soccer fields that are at the Mega Sports Complex, but able to move and, and, and do something year round without worry of weather for our kids. And, and with that, you know, a portion of that money then does roll over to industrial development as far as going to our Commerce Center, which I've just explained, it's filling up. We're, we're very, very close to needing more property so that we can start another one. And that's a great problem to have. And, and, and I invite those types of, of pressures into our administration. But with, with that, I just say that it's, it's really, really hard to do a job when you don't have support. This job is easy, and I promise you that. And with that, I would entertain a motion that we adjourn. Thank y'all. Thank you for being here.